My name is Sean Hill, the executive director of KRT. I appreciate you all for coming out tonight to uh hear some of our proposed service changes. Uh before we get started, I want to go over some housekeeping. And if you do need to use the restroom, if you go out this door, take a right and another right, the restroom's uh right there. Uh but our agenda for today is as follows. I'm going to get into a little bit about KRT, who we are, what we do and how we do that. Uh if you were here for any of our public hearings last year, this is going to be a very familiar presentation. Appreciate you coming back. Secondly, where are our goals and responsibilities? What is KRT? Uh why do we do what we do? Proposed service recommendations. We're getting really deep into our on-demand transit program, which is called KRT Plus. Uh we'll talk about our fare changes that were approved last year, just as a reminder. And then we had the public comments and making sure that everyone who came out tonight gets a chance to let us know your thoughts and ideas on what we're talking about. So who are we at KRT? We are the largest public transit agency in the state of West Virginia. We have one hundred and fifty-nine total employees. That's broken up between operators, so you can call those bus drivers. We call them fixed route operators. They drive the buses. On-demand drivers, uh they operate what for years? We call it CAT. We call alternative transit. So that's the paratransit, our SOAR, which is the State Of The Way Response Program, and our new on-demand KRT Plus program. We also have a staff with maintenance, our maintenance staff, about twenty mechanics, fourteen MSPs, which are the maintenance service personnel who clean and maintain our facilities and vehicles. And then about thirty-three members of admin who do things from dispatch, crew supervisors, uh management, et cetera. Uh put on there twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five days a year. We are, our garage is open twenty-fourth, that doesn't matter if it's Christmas, et cetera. Uh we have individuals in there to maintain those vehicles and keep our facilities secure in your room. What we do, I think there are five things um that KRT does really well. And the first is our fixed route service. So this is the bus routes that we're talking about. Everyone's still familiar with, they think we're a bus company. I would argue we're a lot more than that. We're also an on-demand service. So that's again, the paratransit, microtransit, SOAR. And third, this is an interesting one. We manage the Kevin's Fuel Program. Since nineteen ninety-six, Canaan County has had a fuel consortium where about a hundred different partner agencies, whether it's from the county or from different municipalities come together and their body power is is brought together. And every two years, we go out for a contract for fuel. And KRT maintained that from the Sheriff's Department, seniors, citizens, uh Canaan County Ambulance Authority, different cities, actually tonne paid our fee and refuel at our s- our location. We're at two satellite facilities. We have a Nitro and Barnet. Uh we're really proud of that program because especially like during COVID, we saved millions of dollars for Canaan County uh by saving money on diesel and gasoline. Uh emergency evacuations, whenever uh CW Sigma calls me from emergency services and says, hey, there's a fire down here at this apartment complex on Canaan Boulevard, um flooding, et cetera. They call us and they're able to quickly bring buses to them uh and get them rolling again. So we're really proud of that. And lastly, public service charters. This is uh events we bring to the community such as, we talked about Bragada, it's been up in two weeks, Orstel Pole, different events that happen across the county. Uh we perform charters for them to give back, let's be recognized. Those communities give so much to us also. So those are five different things that we do. Uh what does it cost? This is KRT's budget. So we say, okay, the majority of this obviously is labor. We have this one hundred and fifty-nine employees and the fringe benefits, services, materials, supplies, et cetera, you name it. What we're talking about here is about seventeen point one million dollars and going up every single year as all of those things, every line there gets more expensive than it's like it does for a lot of the group. So how do we do that? Our biggest funder is the Canaan County Safety Levy. Fifty-five percent of our funding comes through that safety levy. Uh we partner up with the Canaan County Ambulance Authority and then the Canaan County Commission also receives a portion of that that they're able to um decide how they allocate. So that traditionally goes to volunteer fire departments, et cetera. So the biggest thing is the safety levy, about nine million dollars. Uh the federal government through FTA provides three point five million dollars to us. Our passenger fares are about one point one million. So that this goes back to some of the questions and comments last public hearing was, well, if we could just raise the ticketing prices, this would solve your your issue. But again, that's a minor portion of our revenue, actually, from tickets. So our State Of The Way Response Program, this is a program through the state's D H H R where we receive funding to provide transportation to individuals who are in Of The Way Recovery Programs. Uh we're proud of that one and it continues to uh help fill some budget gaps for us. Investments, uh state funding comes in, about two hundred and sixty-one thousand. We appreciate that from the state. Um and the rest is some advertising and charter work and then that fuel program that I talked about earlier. So earlier I said it costs seventeen point one million dollars. All the revenue that I just spoke of comes up to sixteen point two, which gives us an eight hundred eighty-four thousand dollar deficit. Now, if you came to our meetings last year, that number was bigger. It was around one point three billion dollars last year. If you recall, I'm sure you won't do, we made some changes as far as the frequency of our routes. We also eliminated Sunday service. What that was able to do was take that one point three million dollar deficit and trim it down to eight hundred eighty-four thousand dollar deficit. But as you can tell, that's still a sizable amount of money that KRT does not have revenue to cover. So how do we do that? We, every year, we have what we call a capital reserve fund. It has about six million dollars in it right now. And every year that this number stays the way it is, it's subtracting from that capital reserve. Eventually, you get to the point that we don't want to ever get KRT to where that capital reserve is zero and our red line is still there. That's why we have to make some of these changes. They're tough changes. In order to say, how do we still provide service at the level that people are used to across an extremely challenging county? It's not easy to serve with public transit. Uh and I appreciate y'all coming tonight to listen to some ideas that we have of how we're going to try to get closer to balancing this budget. Uh some goals and responsibilities that we take extremely seriously at KRT is being reliable, consistent and convenient. Those are three things. If you rely on KRT to get you to work, to school, to the grocery store, medical, bike, et cetera, you need us to hit on all three of those things in order to be successful. We understand that and take it very seriously. And none of the optics or ideas that we talk about tonight were decisions were made without thinking of those three. Uh that's in the, that's in our mind all the time. Okay. And we're giving some data now to go over riderships of routes and what got us the logic of why we've come to this conclusion of making some changes to about six different routes. You see here, uh average daily ridership in twenty twenty-five, the majority, almost eighty-five percent of our rides comes from Quincy, Nitro, uh Canola City and St. Albans, South Charleston routes. That's important to us. That's during our last round of changes to service, we actually bumped up those routes to be at more frequency. Uh it's the direct answer to that's the people riding the bus. There are obviously people riding the bus from these other routes also in smaller numbers. That's still important to us. If you're one of those people who ride those routes, it's it's the most important thing to you. We're cognizant of that and that's why we're going to make sure that, as I bring up some other options, the address is you as well. Uh so for route summaries here, we look at our per-passenger cost. That's a number we've been chasing for different routes. The industry standard is around, we'd say, five to six dollars per passenger would be a a successful fixed route. Okay? So what we're looking at is per-passenger costs that are exorbitant. So you see in the left with May twenty twenty-four, before we made any changes to our frequency, before we made any changes to the Sunday service, et cetera. You see ridership and you see on the right column, that's this last past month, so May of twenty twenty-five. Uh the numbers have gone down as far as ridership on those six routes on the bottom, the City Park, Works Avenue Beach, South Hills, South Park, Fort Hill. And the cost per passenger has gone up on almost all of theirs, except for South Park, Sea Bear, um Works Avenue, et cetera. So there's, the goal was for that minimizing frequency to lower our cost per passenger. It hasn't achieved that in every route. Uh and then when I I look at the total of those six routes, that's seven hundred and eighteen thousand dollars a year to operate those services through SIF does. Okay. So what are we looking at tonight? Uh our proposed service modifications for this program would be to take those six routes. So that's uh parts of Route ten, so that's the City Park, um Hillcrest, North Gate route. We're talking specifically about North Gate and Hillcrest when it comes to Route ten. So it's not the whole entire thing. City Park will still have fixed route service. But uh Routes eleven, thirteen, fifteen, sixteen, and eighteen, we're looking at replacing them entirely with microtransit zones. How do we accomplish that? We're going to have to add three new microtransit zones that we don't currently have. Uh we currently have three in pilot program, East Charleston, West Charleston, and South Hills. We're looking at adding Canaan City, South Charleston, South Ridge, and extending the boundaries to East Charleston, so. Okay. So what is microtransit, you may say? What is this KRT Plus program? Uh how does it work? Where are the zones? Does it work? And where will it go in the future? This program operates from six AM to six PM currently, eight to ten vehicle, eight to ten passengers in a vehicle. It's ADA compliant. Uh it can operate all of our services from paratransit to SOAR to on-demand microtransit. Uh with a wait time of up to thirty minutes and a drop-off window of forty-five minutes, that's KRT Plus. And KRT Plus exists currently inside the App Store, the Google Play Store. You can download this today. And if you're in one of those three existing zones, ask for a ride to take you anywhere inside your zone or to take you to a fixed route or to the airport, which is a point of interest for us. Uh and also, if you don't wish to download an app, you can call our office and schedule a ride. Traditional, you don't have to use a smartphone at all. You call them and say, hey, I mean, you picked up tomorrow at two PM, that vehicle will come get you. Uh in the top right, you see the current map, which is the three zones, East Charleston, West Charleston, and South Hills. And you see the fixed routes overlay on top of them. Uh so again, more in depth of how does KRT Plus work? You have three options. KRT Plus to the fixed route. This is, you pay the same dollar fifty as it would cost to ride the bus. We come pick you up inside your zone, that's your house, and take you to the fixed route, the closest fixed route. The system uh takes you there and then you actually have uh an hour time that you can transfer for free. So once you get to the end of the city center or to the route that you, that's closest to you, you can then transfer for that same cost. Same zone trap. So if you are in one of these zones and you want to travel somewhere else inside that same zone, you will get picked up and dropped off. It's door to door. So if you are on Oakwood Road and you want to be picked up at your house and dropped off at Kroger, you can be picked up and you schedule a time and then drop off at Kroger. You won't have to go through uh the fixed route service at all. And our last option here is points of interest. Currently, we have the airport with a twelve dollar fee. Anywhere inside of those zones, you can be picked up, taken to the airport, vice versa. So if we land, you can be taken back uh to whatever address. And again, here's a bigger picture of that existing service. Uh we started with these three zones and we wanted them to cover, we wanted them to cover some of these routes that were extremely over subsidized. And we wanted to to bring this pilot program first in order to give individuals a chance to try it out, see if it does work, and it performed well. We wanted to be confident that it's going to work before we roll it out and say, okay, well, this is the replacement for fixed route services. So the existing service map, so it doesn't work. Uh over the last several months, since October of twenty twenty-four, we've been running this program. Uh we've seen our numbers go from nine completed rides, eleven hundred. Now we're hovering a little over three thousand. Uh last month, it was twenty-nine hundred. The important thing to us was this number right here, net demand rate. We want to keep that number as high as possible. That means that almost ninety percent of the time that someone asks for a ride at KRT Plus, there were a ride available to take them to their finish line. Uh that's the number that we wanted to make sure it was high enough before we ever thought of turning on another zone. Because that's what's important to you all, is that the system works. Uh over here, you see actually a visualization of how those numbers went up. So this is what we're talking about tonight. This is the proposed new service map for KRT. You'll see that Canona City, South Ridge, and South Charleston have been added on here. And then you see those fixed routes that are no longer here, the South Hills route, the Fort Hill route. And several others that are, that are no longer on on this map. This is the plan of how we get closer to those segments. Here they are side by side to compare. All right. Some briefly asked questions. Timeframe for this, uh as last time, any decision that is made by KRT that goes to our board, our board makes a decision on these service changes due to scale. I, what's likely from our board, the board has asked us to have these meetings. And I would think that a July to August timeframe with the board actually making a decision on these changes could be possible. It, I could be wrong about that. It did take wrong with them having. But I just want to be honest about that. What happens to our CAT paratransit passengers? During our last public hearings, it there were a lot of questions and attention and worries about what would this do for CAT slash paratransit. Um it technically won't do anything to that. You'll still book your uh rides exactly the same way. Many of our CAT passengers have been using this system and maybe not knowing it for over a year, like a year and a half now. Um where they just call in and book a ride. They, but they could be getting on their phone and doing the same thing up to two weeks in advance. Smartphone app, a lot of people don't want to use the smartphone. That's completely fine. There's days I wish I didn't have one. Uh you can call in, you can get on the phone and call, book your rides up to two weeks in advance, which is important. Obviously, the further that you book ahead, the higher the likelihood that they're going to have a ride available for you. If you wait till the day of, there's, you know, we hope you can still get a ride, but obviously looking ahead is a great thing. Will it cost more? Transfer to fixed route remains the same, an hour to fifty. We want to make sure that none of these changes that we bring to our passengers in those service areas cost them more financially. That's our goal. And that's what we're we're sticking with. So who will be driving? Uh existing and new KRT operators. What this program will do for us essentially will be a shift down the road of potentially having less fixed route bus drivers and more on-demand drivers. There are some advantages for KRT for that. It's it's easier to hire someone uh without a CDL, which those vehicles don't require a CDL. They're smaller, which is much safer for our passengers and also helps us feel liability as far as they have two point three million miles they'll be driving here. You'll think of how many accidents, et cetera, that happen. So having smaller, safer, safer, more fuel-efficient vehicle is really important to us. Uh again, why now? This this question is best answered by that budgetary issue. None of the things that we're coming up with tonight would be happening if we were in a perfect world. Uh I think you all have, the individuals who ride those routes have very valid reasons for why you're frustrated with these changes. Our goal all along is how can we make changes that are the least impactful here every day life, that you can still get from A to B. It may not be the way that you're used to. It may not be the way you want to go. I understand. It's not easy for us to come up here. We have these hearings, but every day we do public transit. We work to try to figure out how do we maximize our efficiencies so we don't have to go through the shoes. But thankfully, our proposal still leaves everybody that has service with service. That's important to us. Uh lastly, I want to touch on the fare changes. This was approved in October of twenty twenty-four. But we now have a date on when this is going to hap- go into effect. So July fourteenth. Our uh the single day, single ride tickets will stay the same, no change. Our one, our day passes will be from two fifty to three fifty, so up to a dollar. And then importantly, our thirty-one day pass or a month pass actually decreased from sixty dollars to fifty dollars. So people ask us, well, why would you be doing that? Our scenario, we've seen time and time again, looking at the data, is we have passengers who ride the bus every single day. You may not buy a month pass at the beginning of the month. And what happens is they, at the end of the month, they end up paying more um than if they just bought that month of pass. We don't think that's fair. So what we're also doing is instituting, uh it's called fare caping. So if you spend fifty dollars in a thirty-day, thirty-one-day period, next time you go to buy a ticket, if the system's going to say, you don't owe me. We don't think it's fair that KRT is chargedable for that just because you couldn't front it until the end of the month. So that will change. That will be through electronic ticketing. You'll have smart cards essentially that'll be no different than, you know, a Kroger card or something like that. You can scan, you can load up with all your tickets on it. So we're bringing that uh technology and I think it's going to save people money and it's going to make it less frustrating, keeping track of of visible passes, et cetera. Also. So that will happen July fourteenth. We're going to have a campaign to make sure that we educate everyone um on how these changes will impact them. We're also looking, we have uh ticket vending machines, TDMs, that are actually on-site. We don't have them installed yet, but the city center will have ticketing machines where you can actually reload these cards. And in the future, we'll make a lot of use of it, especially if you guys quickly come to the city center and into add fare to your cards. Uh at this point in time, I randomly threw that presentation rather quickly, but it was to make sure that anyone who had any comments would get a chance to to bring them up to us. I think we ran out of list here. The way we've done this in the past is a, is a three-minute time period where you come out, ask questions, make comments. Um I want to go through this list just one by one as you were signed up, but if Susan Ward would like to come, sweet first, we'd appreciate it.
Um I've ridden CAT paratransit since the late eighties. It has made working possible for me. I wouldn't be able to do it otherwise. It's just in the recent uh last year and a half that somebody had done some of your changes that I have been beginning to work late sometime forty minutes late. Like to know how that's going to be addressed because if you're on the main routes are bumping a scheduled route like that, can can they not be put in the priority still not people, people who can work and people going medical parties?
Yep. That's, it's a fantastic question. It's a good point. Um our goal all through this program has been that none of the changes with microtransit will impact our paratransit passengers. I I think you're extremely correct on what you've experienced as far as some of the frustrations that you rolled that pilot program out. On July, when is the, on the fourteenth of July, when this paywall's coming to the microtransit program, we expect that to actually decrease the demand of microtransit temporarily. But our goal all along and the priority is for, first off, is the paratransit passengers, the CAT program, that it's been followed historically. We've been working with our software and to resolve some of those issues, especially when individuals in the CAT burger or paratransit burger may be rerouted to help accommodate those microtransits. We're working with our software to stop that happening in the future. We want to make sure we can get you to where you're going within the rules that I'm that thirty. So it's a real frustration and I'm sorry that you did that. We're working to make sure that doesn't happen in the future.
Well, no, I do appreciate that because that's a big concern. Um some employers are less forgiving than others.
Yeah, getting there is half the battle and I think that again, when I say being alive, always I'm cool with that, you know, safe, being safe, but being reliable. Your, your employer may not care why KRT dropped the ball in, or I would say that. We are, we, we understand that and take that very seriously. So for those times that we have been late, uh we are sorry for that. We are working as hard as we can to make the system work for you and you'll continue to be a priority for us. Yes, man. Thank you. Thank you, Susan. Uh next I have Anthony Hall, please.
Oh, okay. Um we, this is an older state, you know, people count on the bus. We, in my area, I live on the west side, there's a lot of low-income people that live where I live at. And um it's more convenient for them to get on the bus and go to work or go to grocery store or something. They have to get a new, you know, this new program that's starting. And um, you know, and most of the Charleston is hills, a lot of hills. I mean, that's all except for the low area. Um and I know it must cost a lot of money to get all these new vehicles too. So what do you guys want to do to make it more convenient for older citizens, for people who work every day? Make sure they get to work or they can get to the store and make it more key, just a little bit more convenient for the people. In these areas.
Yeah. So that's, that's a great question, Anthony. Uh it is a big a big priority for us to make sure that this system doesn't ever really complicate, especially the, that this was passengers who rely on our service. It was important to us that an individual could call in. You know, be a smartphone, the newest, they don't have to track it on the app. They can actually just call to us, especially those areas. But I want to make sure this is is communicated. He's going to pull it up all the time, so. But what's important to us is for those passengers, especially if you say, I'm from the west side of Charleston, in that zone, if they're picked up and they want, so they, they get picked up over by a support truck and they want to go to the Kroger or to Big Lots, et cetera, et cetera. The idea to take them, pick them up at their home on their step. I don't, I don't care if KRT's, hey, the bus comes every two hours or whatever. With our, with our system here, you know, you'd be picked, you'd be picked up at your home and actually dropped off. And instead of ever getting on the bus, you're in one of the smaller vehicles. Small vehicle that costs about ninety-four thousand dollars, or something about five hundred thousand dollars for a bus, a vehicle that gets better fuel efficiency also for us. And more importantly, for passengers, it's on their step than ours. Pick them up, naturally drop them off at the field. That's one option. That, that's only if they're trying to do the same zone. So that's one option. But if they want to get somewhere outside that zone, they can say, hey, they put inside the app, I'm in West Charleston, I want to get to Charleston. It'll take them to the fixed route. You should actually get them over there. So I think you're right. I think that the responsibility is going to be on KRT to educate these individuals and say, hey, here's how this system works. Uh here's how it can work for you. Uh what we plan to do is stand with the city center, have members of our team actually work with individuals through the actual program and pay, where do you live? Where are you going to try to go? How would that work, this new system? Uh I don't promise that it's going to have zero growing pains. I think it's, it's going to be, angels on the chart. Change is tough. What, what we challenged ourselves with was, is there a way for us to still maintain service for all these areas with, inside the budget that we currently have? This is the closest thing to achieving. I don't pretend that it's perfect. I think it's, it can be in certain instances exciting for individuals who are in a, in a zone and uh go to dinner and you don't want to drive home. You take the KRT Plus. Do we save some lives? Hopefully. I hope that that means that we save, you know, on the UIs, et cetera.
Uh it's been hard for a lot of people, that plus, you know, a lot of older people, a lot of people who have to go to work, they camp on the bus routes to take them to work.
Yeah. Yeah, we, I, I think that you're right, but I think also that we're going to take very seriously the task of educating individuals of how it works. We've got very patient staff that will work with those individuals. We've got more people that we brought on actually just to to help with the scheduling. So uh we will be very patient. I think once we've worked with her a couple of times and explained to individuals how it does work, we, we don't take you racing. But I, I don't pretend that you're wrong, but I'll take us about for it. It is, it is, the change is hard. It's really hard. We want to make sure we can change, that we do it the way it's still been based. Thank you, Isaac. Uh Carlos Gonzalez, please.
Uh this, I, I wasn't real clear when you were saying that it's like your Kroger card is going to be electronic now. Is it thirty, are these one away for thirty-day passes?
So we still have those on hand. Uh but as, we will phase those out, you know, eventually. And it's a plastic card that you could put a thirty-one day.
How do you do that?
So uh you can preload money onto it. So uh here, July fourteenth, that thirty-one day uh card will cost fifty dollars. Uh if you wanted to, you could add fifty dollars upfront, uh and spend it throughout the month.
But how do you blow the money onto the card? I don't do that.
Okay. Uh at our city center, you can give the person at the window uh the money, make add it to your card.
Okay, then you just tap it on the bus? Okay, um how about when there's um a grid down, you know, hackers like to wreak havoc on the system and something like? Okay, um, how about when there's some, a grid down, you know, hackers like to recap it on system and something like.
Yeah, because that's just. That word ever happened. We, we would turn everybody to count that day. Uh, if somebody tried to board a bus and the system was down and that was the only means to pay it, we would, uh, give a free bond.
Okay.
But I was going to say one thing, the, uh, the new fare captain. So you don't really have to put the fifty dollars on the card at the beginning of the month. You just pay a dollar fifty each ride. And then when the, when you spend three dollars fifty cents on that first day. You don't spend any more than that. It gives ride free the remainder of that. And then in the thirty one days, we've reached fifty dollars. It's right free, they remain in thirty one days.
Okay, um, this is an older state. Someone else said that too. And, um, I'm sixty seven. In a lot of ways, I'm still living in the twentieth century. So a lot of this technology is difficult for me. Um, but I also wanted to tell everybody, I, I've been writing, I've been living here now for about two years. And, um, all the bus drivers and all the, um, like when I call in dispatch to ask for, um. Information on holidays or weather or routes or something, everyone is so nice and, um, I really appreciate the customer service. Thank you.
That's, that's really important to us. And also, we need to ask about how if we put the, the tickets on, the, the funds on your account. So you can do it just the same way you do now, buy the tickets. But again, there will also be a kiosk that kind of look like an A T M. Where you go to load your card on. So that it'll hopefully make that situation even faster for passengers to align to the window.
So I still have a visible card.
Yes.
Yes, yeah. Also in the future. Have partnerships with local retail businesses, uh, Kroger, Walgreens, C V S, convenience stores, seven elevens. Where you can go in, you have the cashier or cash, you know, add it to your account.
All right. Is there anyone else who didn't get a chance to speak who would wish to?
My, my name is Robert Williams. I, I'd just like to say goodbye to Beach Avenue Bus. I've been riding that since nineteen seventy, early seventies, mid seventies. That route has been around for a long time. And, uh, it's, you know, the only constant, one of the only constants in the universe is change. And I understand why you're doing what you're doing, but I hope that there will come a time when perhaps you can, uh, bring back at least the Sunday routes. Um, and, um. And I did have, there, one, one thing come to mind of the, uh. On the end of on, on demand. It's one thing to schedule your out, your pickup. But if you're going to a doctor's office, sometimes you go to a doctor's office and they have you waiting there for like two hours, you know, or an hour and a half. I mean. It's not always easy to like schedule when you need to be picked back up. Same thing even going, going to grocery store, but more specifically doctor's appointments or other appointments. People are going to see a lawyer, people are, you know, going to, and, and, and. You know, they don't know. It might be one hour, it might be three hours. So when you schedule a pickup, do you also schedule a return? Pickup at the same time or do you have to wait? Because you can do the one, the pickup two weeks in advance. But if you don't know when you need to be picked up, you're going to be in on demand at that point, literally on demand that day at that time. How, how is, how are you contemplating handling that?
That's a good question. So you have the option of doing it both ways that you described. So you could say, pick, pick me up at one P M and then. Come pick me up from the doctor's office at three. That's exactly right. Life happens in twenty eight. Reality, whether you're going to be finished at that time, it'll be ready picked up. You know, uh, you can also, like you said. When you do finish up, then you schedule the ride to come pick you up. Uh, and that scenario of the wait time is thirty minutes. From the time that you're asking to ride there. So at this point right now, you're accomplishing ninety percent of the rides that are happening. It's about thirty percent.
But it's the, uh, cats, cats work.
Yeah, well, and so that's our, that's our point. What we have. Is drug tested, background checked, individuals are on camera the entire time. Safety factor is important to us. It's not perfect. Uh, I'm not pretending that the service is going to be perfect, but I think. I'm thankful that it is a service that can still be issued on the future. So I, I appreciate that your ridership and your support to us.
What about Sunday routes? Are you, are you planning at some point in the future, if possible, to, I mean, is that on a, is that a priority?
If possible, it's always on the table. I think, I think that. I think at the time, what, what, what the public was screaming to us was just don't take away route entirely. What changes can we come up with creatively? Our creative solution is looking at what other entities have done across the country with the Sunday service. That's tough for people. People still work on Sundays. They'll use that day to go get groceries, et cetera. Maybe they don't go to the doctor, but they do, they do other things. Uh, we're cognizant of that. Our goal is to always get back to providing the service that you all want and need. Again, we have to live within those budget realities that we make best when the tough decisions come out. Uh, but I know for board members that we have. It's very important to us that we provide the best service we can to the city. It, it's always on. Yes, sir. And thank you for that, Hall. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Um, I'm not clear on whether the, uh. The fifty dollars that you're going to charge for the thirty one day pass. Is it going to be like the current thirty one day pass where you buy the pass? And then, well, if you have to travel four times on different buses to get to various places. Uh, you do so, or does it, or is it like the cards that have a set amount on them and it's tracks proven every time?
It's more, uh, similar to the value cards you're talking about where it has a. Ten dollars, fifteen dollars on it, that's reach drive. Uh, the new technology, it'll keep track of how often you ride, every trip you ride. Um, so you'll no longer have to spend fifty dollars upfront to ride for thirty one days. The system will track your trip history. And when you reach that fifty dollars in the thirty one day period. You get to ride free the remainder of the month. Um, you do have to use the smart card, the plastic card or a mobile device to utilize the fare captain.
So essentially, once you've ridden thirty three times. So you transfer, et cetera, thirty three rides. Next to thirty four time you go to purchase a ticket, it's going to say it's. You'll ride for free. Now, and that's, that's from that thirty, was it thirty one day, thirty, right? So it, it keeps track of when you spent that first, the first time you can go and ride. That's when the thirty one day time was, that's counting down. And then once those thirty one days are up. The next time you go to buy a ticket, it is going to charge you the dollar fifty. But once you hit that wall, that's what's called fare captain. You will never spend more than fifty dollars a month with K R T regardless of how often we ride. Because we want to say that people that use our service every day, if you want to give it back, we don't want to take more from you. It's, it's hard enough. Um, and that's what we instituted that program. We weren't able to do that without the electronic cards. So this, that new technology of scanning that and get on the bus allows us to do that. It's one of the main reasons we would have that signal.
So why? We can't, we can't pay with cash when we get on the bus?
We still can. We still pay with cash. We're not going away from that at all. We don't want to leave people who, uh, uh, it, it's clear to us. You mentioned it's an aging population who went through that. We don't want to. Unduly make it more complicated for you. We understand we're doing that enough. The system. But that we're going to leave that system in place and be able to pay with cash. You don't have to ever embrace this. Uh, I would argue it saves you money to go to the other route because it will save you that fifty dollar amount. But otherwise, you could travel the buses. All right, well, if there's no other comments, uh, I appreciate your all space.
Yeah, I was. I was just curious. Uh, I was wondering if you would, uh, mention this during while you were going over the statistics of your, of your service. Images. Uh, I was wondering if you have any statistics on. On, uh, you know, your, uh, part of footprint and how that might be changing.
Yeah, so a, as part of our, um. Comprehensive operational analysis that we did, it's going to be spoken to. Which is a system plan. Uh, part of it was looking at the microtransit feasibility. It makes sense to do this. Uh, the goal there obviously is to have smaller, more fuel efficient vehicle. It's not essentially operating all day long. Of the N E L S. So. We don't have specific numbers, but am I confident that by using smaller, more fuel efficient vehicles, uh, only when people need the ride, not drive, I'm. There have been countless times that I've asked drivers on South Hills Route, how many people can they come? They say there are people the whole day or for their four hour shift, et cetera. So. I'm positive that if you're just going out to pick up the people when they want the ride and you're in this small, more fuel efficient vehicles. You're going to help with the army footprint. That's really important to us as we move forward. But I don't have specific number for you. I can, I can try to find.
Uh, thanks. I don't, I don't need the personality. I'm just glad that you're, you know, considering that. And I feel like what you're doing with the, the fifty. We'll sell it cat monthly. Uh, that's all I, that's all I wanted to mention.
And, and one thing I mentioned too. We had a meeting yesterday. We talked about fourteen vehicles that we have. That are going to be performing some of the K R T plus services. They are Ford Transit vans, so they're a smaller vehicle than our traditional cat vans. They still have the eight seats, still can be, they're actually more customizable as far as the, fit wheelchairs, et cetera, which is important to us. But they're more fuel efficient, they're pricing three points, much lower than the old vehicles. And they're easier for our maintenance team to work on, which actually will not keep them on any losses for us. Uh, and the replacing, if, if you look at and you see those old cat, the light and blue vehicles. These new spare vans will actually replace those. So that's something we're constantly doing behind the scenes, but we want to do that to, A, save us. Cost, but B, I should remain safe on service decisions to. And C, with the, the fuel efficiencies also. Uh, those are, we have fourteen of those that are going to be joining our fleet in the next two weeks. Two, three weeks and then they will actually retire. About ten of them are order cat vans that. What year, what was this sixteen? Twenty sixteen cats, it's almost ten, those ten year old vehicles in replacement to this. And we're really excited about that. It's something just like. Across the door, thank you. Right? Any other comments? Yeah, thank you all for being here today. Uh, we're going to continue to do everything we can to make this. To keep you all informed as changes happen at your set of those, right? Appreciate your all's interest in K R T and, and what it is.